Friends, I'm going to call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to order on April the 4th at 6:03 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Dillon, Girbaugh, McClellan, Rhodes, and Tahar. Councilmember Seale will be absent from both the work meeting and the regular meeting this evening. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, and Deputy Treasurer McDonough. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments. Moved by Tahar, seconded by Mayor Protem Rhodes. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say aye. The motion carries unanimously. There's only one discussion item this evening. It's the presentation of fiscal year '17 general operating budget. You should have received in your packet on Thursday a memo dated March the 31st. Two memos dated March the 31st. Excuse me. Staff has obviously worked hard on this to get us to the point we're at now. There's a bit of work that remains undone and some issues and concerns that I know staff will bring up tonight and at subsequent meetings. I do want to take a moment to remind everyone, although there aren't members of the public with us currently, there may be some who arrive in a bit, so please be sure to talk into the microphones. Also, we are recording this meeting. It is our standard, it is our policy now to record all work meetings, so we want to make sure we hear you. And before I turn over to Mr. Campbell, it is my responsibility to acknowledge that our deputy treasurer, Ms. McDonough, is celebrating her birthday this evening. So we wish you a happy birthday and
Happy birthday, yeah.
Acknowledge that while we appreciate your work, your efforts, and your attendance this evening, I'm sure there are many other places you would prefer to be, and we take no offense. So, thank you again for being here and happy birthday, Joanne. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. So, you may recall, the last two years, we were excited to be able to bring you a balanced budget, meaning that we had, we were, we actually were a little bit in the black proposed. This year, while it's not as bad as it has been in past years, this is the first year that we're realizing the big personal property exemption. Last year, we had the small business owners and now we have the big manufacturing. We have the annual CPI from Department Treasury. It's flat at 1.03, so no growth. And also, our statutory revenue sharing is down. So, again, I don't want to steal a lot of thunder because certainly Mickey Joe and Joanne have done a lot of the heavy lifting along with their other department heads, and we've been working hard as a team to close this gap. We do have, as Mickey Joe's cover memo states, you know, the projected deficit of $249,000 and change is attributable to the items that I just mentioned. So, however, as Mickey Joe and Joanne will get into the details here in a moment, proposing to utilize, the LDFA is paying back, those of you that are familiar, we started this a couple of years ago, because the years ago, when on South Industrial, that park was constructed, the general fund loaned the LDFA a little over a million bucks to, about a million and a half, I think, Joanne?
Million seven.
Million seven, okay. To, for infrastructure, and there was also some street dollars there that they're paying back as well. So, and also, another important note is, a part of this, of course, is a one-time cost of the Michigan Ave project, which is a portion of the streetscape items coming out of this. And for those that weren't, so obviously, Mr. Seale's not here, but Heidi, you're here. This is for the last year and a half or better ago when we talked about this, and staff had proposed to be able to, so we didn't have to issue any debt for this, to come out of Tifa and this, the payback from the LDFA portion of that to be paid for. And that's, so that's what we're continuing to propose, as well as to make up the gap. And of course, we also know that there's additional, the city's additional share for fire department with proposing to have the three additional full-time firefighters here in the near future. So, unless there's questions for myself, I'd be happy to turn over to Mickey Joe and Joanne.
And ladies and gentlemen, you do this, you take as much time as you would like and that you deem appropriate, and then when you've concluded, we'll work our way around the table again and entertain a first round of questions and concerns, and then our approach subsequent to that will be a little bit more casual, okay? Mickey Joe, Joanne, the floor is yours.
Okay. Well, the memo kind of says it all, but I, what I do want to do is give the birthday girl her credit. If you look this year on the back of the general fund, she's recapped some of the highlights of some of
Well, that's not
Oh.
The financials are 20 pages. So, that's a separate item.
Right there.
I know. They probably show you paying
Well, it looks like that.
The package is as much
So, I think, I think this sheet kind of helps explain out some of the things we talked about. As Todd alluded to, this budget does include a flat revenue increase in our property taxes. So therefore, this proposed budget includes a flat salary cap for our employees. It will include for those employees who are in mid-stuff, it will include for those employees to get their step increases and any of the merit or longevities according to their contracts. But it does not include a 2% or any kind of cost of living increase because the city didn't get one, we're not passing it on to the employees. We also had the personal property loss, the eligible, there's a fancy EMPP, eligible manufacturing personal property that started coming off this year, and as you may recall, this is a phased loss that's going to come over the years. We got our first correspondence from how Treasury is going to reimburse that last week. Todd sent it to me Friday. However, Plant Moran has been working with the state and our auditors, and they provided us with a spreadsheet that Catherine and Joanne and I spent down, and we are going to be getting, you know, they're saying we're going to get 100% of that back, but that's 100% of the lowest tax rate from 2013 to 2016, and it's based on the difference between your 2013 taxable value and your 2016. So that doesn't take into consideration really what we would have gained if it wasn't for the personal property, because we had other personal property that came on the roll, so that offsets that. And we also had a tax increase in there, so that offsets that. So it's a loss, but it's not, and they're replacing, but not at the full capacity. And we are anticipating that we are going to get a full replacement on that, and our capturing authorities, our Tifa and LDFA, will be capturing most of that replacement, not the general fund, because most of our manufacturing is in the industrial parks where those districts are located. The other thing that we included, that is included in this budget, is the MDOT and streetscape project, and Joanne has done a great job on this back sheet showing what's the city costs out of all these, you know, offsetting revenues for all of these projects. We've been reserving that money from Salk Trail with the intention, you know, with the knowledge that we weren't exactly sure what was going to happen with the personal property loss. We knew that MDOT and the Michigan Ave project was going to happen. We did assign last year, what did we assign, $200,000 to streetscape, and we're taking into consideration, you know, for that. So, you know, we're pretty well set off on the streetscape program, but with no revenue coming in from our real property, we still have significant equipment expenses and capital improvement expenses that put us with higher expenditures than we are the revenues. And that's the amount reserved, or assigned by the city council is, you know, the thought process has been, until we see, you know, what's coming back for personal property, we want to kind of restrict that. So it's our suggestion that we, you know, use that funds to help with this process. It's, we've taken, we think, every approach we can to make sure that everything, we've met with the departments, we've arm wrestled them, for lack of a better word, to make sure that there's nothing in their budgets that isn't a necessity. This council has made our infrastructure and our equipment, you know, we held off on purchasing equipment for a number of years, and we've got an equipment program, and we've kept that equipment in here with the idea that we would take part of those reserve funds and help offset those costs. So, I think with that said, is there anything else specific in this budget that we should address, Joanne, that you can think of?
You have to do someone else's question.
These are the major, you know, the major costs associated with this, or on that page. Now
Can you look through the actual financials for the side, the 17 column, and they tie back to the page? And it's kind of those big dollar expenditures, and we have more information for you to set up. Kind of, let me see those totals I don't have in the financials.
There is a significant increase to the fire budget this year due to the addition of their three full-time firefighters, and I'm not sure if, are they proposing increases for their, I think they probably are, is there budget, cost of living increases for their employees in that budget?
In the fire budget? Yeah, I believe there is, yes.
So, with that thought in mind, we do, the city voters have authorized up to a mill that we could use levy as a special assessment, as you recall, and each year, we've already taken action to start that process. What that does is, in addition to our city tax rate of 16.28, that would levy an additional mill that the voters authorized, saying to cover the cost of the fire department operating and expenditures incurred by the city. We did do, Joanne did some projection sheets showing the one mill would not cover the entire cost of what the fire department cost to the city this year. But we did do some projections, if we were to levy the one mill, and again, this is going to be in addition to, the way we have traditionally funded fire operation is out of our general fund. We can capture on personal property tax, so we get more for less, I don't know if that's really how I want to say that. But it doesn't take as big of a city mill to cover the fire department as it does to take an outside special assessment, because the outside special assessment is restricted only to real property. So we have traditionally used our 16.28 and funded the fire department through that. The numbers that you're looking at, the 268,000 gap includes that traditional way, still doing that, still using the 16.28 and taking the fire department out of that. Joanne has prepared these color-coded projection sheets. Just feeling creative these days.
You remember years ago that
Yeah, we were up at the R and B building.
Most of the folks voted for that coming around.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been at least 20 years, not prior to that, back in the eighties or early nineties.
Yeah, we were, this building was under construction and we were at the R and B building, I should be better with my dates, but, yeah, it has been a while. So anyway, if you look at the green, and if you go to requested FY '17, and you go down to the bottom line, which is net revenue over expenditures, if we were to use the one mill that is authorized, that would be our, you know, that we could close the gap and then have some. So then we went through and did it at a half a mill that's shown in the blue, and a quarter of a mill that's shown in the yellow. And again, there was, at whatever lever, whatever one this is, there is still a portion of it coming out of the general fund, because this year's it's bigger than our general fund.
One mill is about $160,000. So that's the swing from negative, you know, 286 to whatever to 218 in the black.
Right.
So, if we add the mill, it would be under $84,000 or $93,000. Just the actual
249.
She rattles them off the top of her head.
249, 683.
So that's just another, you know, we could, just another option of how we could, you know, proceed going forward. But I, we've had the money that we've been reserving, assigning, not reserving, assigning for when these things start coming down the pike. And we've done an excellent job of, you know, covering the MDOT, and we're supposed to be getting personal property, but, you know, these other costs are also things we really can't avoid. Or we can avoid them, I mean, that's your decision as the councilperson. I do want to know that the police dispatch, do you have Jay's numbers or no? I mean, without, at that county millage that had passed for that enhancement, that E-91 enhancement, this same project to upgrade our dispatch was like 249 or something like that, because the, all of the equipment will be coming from that E-911 millage. This is just, you know, for an enter and different things at 88,000. So this is, while it's still 88,000, it's a huge savings because of that E-911 millage that did pass, so.
If we were to decide on that thing, some portion of that, my question is, does it need to be just one year? Do you mean every year?
Yes, every year you have to do it.
And again, this is, staff's not recommending, but we just, again, doing what we're, we're providing the options of what are out there for you all to consider. We're happy to, you know, answer any questions or provide more information, excuse me, but that's, these are possibilities.
And the other thing that you might, this does not include any anticipated land sales. The Monroe Street property, there's offsetting expense to redevelop that parking and the parking lot for the ball field in front of that, and when that sells, it will take that money and offset that, so that's pretty much a wash. And then the, you know, the maple, we just, we don't have anything concrete enough to put in these numbers.
Yeah, we would, just to follow up on that, some that, I can't remember if all council members have made aware, because we haven't had this discussion a while, but early on, when we talked about selling the property, the city property at 207 Monroe Street, of course, the question of parking came up, and so originally, the proposal was to keep some of that, at least some parking area, but then actually, I think it was both developers that had proposed their, their redevelopment there, both wanted all of it, all the property. So, at some point, staff would recommend constructing, and we've, and it's even before my time, but there, we've updated them since then, but to construct a parking lot on the south side of, near the, there's basketball courts over there, so it would be over there in that area, which is city property, and there's actually a curb cut on the south side of Annie's there that's against city property, but that, for the most part, for our cost estimate, would be a wash as far as the proceeds coming in for that.
While we're walking in, we will gain your more residents
Yes. Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Are we actually going to
Yep, they're, I'm not saying they're moving forward, so I'm hoping in the near, very near future, because hopefully about June or July is when we're supposed to be closing on it, so.
In terms of the other revenue projections, what was included in, because we have so many housing potential problems going on, anything in there to kind of increase in the base, or is this based on your tax base?
Well, I think last year, both of us were giving our revenue in FY '16, so Gary had projected some longer numbers, and kind of just carried that with the stuff, for building
For building permits.
And stuff like that.
But
Obviously, we'll hit the roll, you know, the year or two or so.
The tax base has to be, is based on what the value is as of December 31st. So all of those housing starts, you know, maybe they were just basements as of December 31st, but that's tax day, so that's the value that we have to base our revenue on, because that's the day that it locks it in on the roll.
Nice one.
For tax revenue.
Because that's potentially not
Right, but, right.
But we won't collect on it until next year.
Ladies, anything else?
Not unless there's questions.
Good. Joanne, you good?
I'm good.
All right, let's, go ahead, we have to tell you aside from $100,000 a year for the MDOT project, right?
Tifa was
Right.
We weren't setting anything in our operating budget aside for that?
No, no, but we took, we could assign some of the 250,000 that was coming in from Salk Trail, and moved 200,000 to, assigned to get to me, but this money was already in the operating.
Right.
It was just unbalanced out of, came out of Salk Trail.
Assigned, right.
Assigned.
Right, right, and that, right, and that would get, as I mentioned earlier, based upon the original proposal from staff to help pay for the streets, the MDOT reconstruction, streetscape items, so we wouldn't have to issue any debt for that.
So now potentially, a $100,000 occurring to Tifa that could be put towards some of those
No, it could be actually an increase to as well from the projections for the MDOT contract payment.
I'm talking about in the future?
Yeah, once that contract's gone, I think we bump up
Barring no more decreases in personal property.
Yeah, and what you said, a big piece of that revenue is going to Tifa and LDFA because it's personal property, it's supposed to be industrialized. So right now, they're looking like they'll have some to help with.
And the other things too, to remember, excuse me, the other things to remember are that EDC dollars, right, we had dedicated about 135,000 a year for less, or in 2013 or '14 was the last year that we actually received a payment, was that, that was a special agreement with the state, and so we've been, majority of that had been promised to city support of Main Street. And so essentially, as you may recall too, we addressed the EDC board here not too long ago, about, we're still maintaining the EDC in the budget, but it's going to be general fund dollars supporting those activities.
So is that in this collection?
Yeah, right now, it's at about 12.5, the contribution covered EDC for FY '17, which is the last year of her contract, plus the main street. But there, I think there's just a general understanding that we continue to support the dollar value of the EDC.
But nothing but the four lines.
I don't believe so.
Right, but just as a note, I believe it's a requirement to, for that to maintain, for them to be maintained as a Main Street, because the city does have to provide, I guess.
Right, and I just want to make sure, kind of, for that, because I know that was intended, but I didn't know it very much, because I know they were thinking of more.
Right, right now, with the
We've got a lot more.
Has 12.5 be contributed, which leaves them very little unbalanced at the end of FY '17. But I know there's going to be commitment to Main Street, there's the Annars Park, which is, I don't know, 10,000, I'm not sure what that is.
Right, that's
I don't know what we're going to think. And Torrance Market is supposed to have revenues in and expenditures out, they should balance each other.
Right.
I don't know, they're going to have to release any of the expenditures, so.
All right, ladies, well, thank you very much, and more importantly, thank you for your work on this, and, Joanne, this, these three sheets that were passed out tonight that talk about triggering different amounts, denominations of fire special ones, but it's helped out. Thanks for the data.
We didn't want to hand out four different projection sheets in the packet to have you all go all weekend long, what is all this?
We appreciate that you made it up to the paper and attempted to confuse the builder. Let's, I'm always seeing, I'm always starting with Mr. Girbaugh, so I'll take the easy end here tonight. Let's start on the other end of the table, and take as much time as you'd like, this is a big issue, it's complex. Mr. Thorne, we'll start with you, and then obviously move to Councilwoman Tahar, and go ahead. And again, get rid of the microphone.
Okay, so, I'm new to this, so overwhelming, and trying to get my head around everything. So if the Maple Road property is sold, does that go directly back into, would that counter fiscal year '17 then?
That would offset, yes.
Okay.
Unless it's sold before June 30th, then it would go into FY '16. I mean, let's be positive, right?
If I, if I, I don't mean to, if I might, just clarification, Mr. Girbaugh just mentioned too, depending which proposal, if, so you have a straight proposal, I think $100,000 from Livonia Builders, and then Three Oaks, which is, what, $300,000, but with taking the, the, some dollars for infrastructure, 250, that would be paid back by special assessment. So, I mean, again, which, which would, which would be paid back to, which would be paid back to the general fund, but
Not for this fiscal year '17, Colonel.
More than likely not.
Okay.
I would think it would be over a period of years.
Yeah, I think, believe up to maximum 10 years or something of that nature, I believe. Those are, I would just for a note.
And then just clarification for me, but the bucket truck, part of that is coming from DPW and part is coming from Parks.
Right.
Just a
We'll share.
Line.
Right, they're just different departments, but they're all in the general fund.
Okay, okay. I think that's it for me right now.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McClellan. Mr. Tahar?
Yeah, thank you. So several of the questions I had noted, you've already answered in the presentation. So, but I, so, so going back to the possibility of using the special knowledge, the special assessment for fire, one of the things that we've said in past years is we have not done that because we want to spread the cost over as many tax-paying units as possible, right? And so this year, because of personal property tax, then that is a smaller number than it used to be, so, badly. So, have we now lost everything of the personal property tax that we're going to lose, or is this the beginning and it's phasing in?
It's tiered, it's be phasing in.
Okay, so how much have we lost and how much will we projectedly lose?
Well, I can get the rest of those numbers from Catherine.
So, well, so maybe the question is not like actual dollars, but percentage-wise, like have we lost half and we'll lose, you know, or it's not that easy?
I would, it's a, I, no. Okay. Is it a five-year phase in?
I thought so.
And so our loss in total, the way, the calculation that the Plant Moran is providing me in their spreadsheet, taking our lowest millage rate from 2012 and our, based on our loss there, our loss is $557,499.
Of which we expect to recoup 98% potentially?
Yeah, and most of that, so 292,000 will be coming back into the general fund, the balance will be going into the LDFA and the Tifa.
Okay. So 292,000 Okay, so, 292.
And that's, 292 is a full amount, and then 98%, it just, they say 100? No. Okay. The auditor said that when they were working with the state, the state said, we're 98% sure there'll be funds available. So, we figured 98% would be a good number to.
Yeah, thank you, Dean. Okay, all right, so, okay, and, and this will continue for the next five years.
Yeah. It's based on the age of the equipment that they're, you know, so it's a depreciation schedule on their, on their personal property statement. So, depending on what year their equipment was purchased, it falls off, you know, this year, that, you know, and it kind of phases on.
Well, if, if I may, and I may be incorrect, and you all or Todd could correct me, but essentially, effective immediately, 80%, if I remember that statistic correctly, were eliminated. Those were the small claims by small businesses, which although there was 80% of the claims, only made up a fraction.
Right, that was the reduction, that exempted everybody under the taxable value of 80,000. Because 80,000 was the value that they would fall under, the true cash value, so 40,000 taxable.
Which was the vast majority of.
Which was the loss we felt last year. That was the small taxpayers exemption, the SMTEL, and now we have the EMP loss.
Unfortunately, though, we're heading in a lead year, which we have, I think, some of those. Correct. Do we have any, there are still some appeal at this point?
No, actually, our appeal process, we, our reduction, I mean, we're setting very good on that. So. Yeah, somebody knock on wood, will you grab that?
Yeah. Just, so, so is this the worst year? I mean, clearly, eliminating 8% of the taxpayers, but the smallest ones, is, is far less, I'm, I'm interested in dollar amount, not really, no offense, Mayor, the percentage of taxpayers.
Yeah, I, I really don't feel comfortable answering that, because I don't understand the phase and how they're falling off, but I could, I mean, I can ask Catherine for that information.
Okay, well, I mean, the main point is, this is, it's going to continue, so that's useful for me, at least, in thinking about how, what we might do about the, the special assessment option. Is there something else I should have asked about that?
No, you already stomped me.
Okay.
I wasn't aiming to.
They were still benefiting, though, from the approach that we've been using until, it'd be a few years down the road before we lose out of ability to spread.
Okay, okay.
I'd say, I'd say.
All right.
Yeah, it's certainly, certainly not making excuses whatsoever, but it is, it's challenging, to say the least, when, when the state, as Mickey Joe said, we, you know, there's a lot of communities, right, have similar budget timelines, fiscal years as we do, and trying to get information from, from Treasury has not been, hasn't been in a timely fashion, so to try and, as they still try and figure things out as well, so.
Okay.
So, we'll continue, we'll do our best to see if we can come up with an, an answer for that question.
Yeah.
Because we'd like, we'd like to know, too.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with Catherine and try to give you some idea about what the future holds as far as, you know, like, is it the new equipment that comes off, how that works? I'll have that available for you.
Anything else this time?
No, I think that, that was the main thing, but I think we covered everything else.
Agreed. Councilwoman Dillon.
Okay, I'm just looking for clarification. On the one-mill special assessment, if we did the full mill, we'd have, you know, 67,000 extra, correct? Is that what this line is implying?
No, the loss on the original was 33,000.
Right, no, I'm sorry, I was looking on the column, so we're up 90.
Right, and then you swing up 118, so you're thinking of, for a percentage, it's an 1,000 dollars.
Right, and what can we do with that? Can we use it for other, can it be reallocated?
The 118?
The 118. To anything?
Well, it's a whole, it's your unassigned fund balance for use on anything.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I mean.
It'd be for, you'd replace general fund dollars, so, so anything that would qualify, so, yeah, there's a lot of things that it could do.
So, if you look at the bottom line, and Joanne, this is where you're, you probably need to address this issue, about the percentages here of the, so, if you remember, we talked about our fund balance policy earlier on this year, and we had set a target, a mark between 15 to 20% that we wanted our unassigned, unreserved fund balance to be, so that in the event of some, 2008 or whatever episode, we would have some reserves to fall back on. 15 to 20% is what our auditors are recommending, you know, and now they're saying, after we've seen what happened in 2008, more than that is not unheard of. But our fund by, balance says that if we're in excess of the 20%, then we are going to discuss reallocating those dollars and paying down some of our pensions, some of our other long-term healthcare costs and stuff like that. So, any, if we were to do that, that would fall in that bucket.
Okay, that was what I, yeah, I would, I was hoping that that money could be, go towards the.
Not the current, the current money.
Right, no, I just wanted to make sure that, that would be where they would go.
I mean, you're not required, you start, I mean, I think the projections that she has on there, the most were, you know, 27%. That's not excessive, really, than when you think about the dollar amount of that extra 7%.
Okay, I guess I still have to process that through. The other thing are, is, a lot of the equipment purchasing, can that be deferred? Is it just in line, I mean, do we need to do this at this point?
Well.
Can we push some of that out?
Do you want to handle that one?
Sure, sure, so, certainly, members of council that have been here, at least since I've been here, before and after, but we have, because of the, when 2008, '09 hit, and through probably 2013-ish, '12, '13, we were, we were cutting and slashing and pushing things off, and, and if you can imagine, at least I'm a, I'm a kind of a concrete thinker, right, I can see a picture, or be able to grab onto it or something, but if you can imagine, I mean, all this equipment, especially in our fleet and the DPW, it's still needed, but it just, when we defer, it just keeps piling up, and, and the, the number gets bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger, and so, and, and what we had done for all those years was defer. It's just been the last couple of years that we've been able to, to start purchasing some of those, those needed, a piece of equipment. So, the reason staff has proposed to continue on is so we don't continue, because it's still, there's still a pileup, if you will. But this way, we can still, some of the, the bucket trucks and such, that, that certainly we need to make sure that there, our folks have good quality, safe equipment to use.
And the, if you look at the number, footnote number 10 on here, it's a used bucket truck, and this is going to be similar to what you see, what we've seen a lot in town right now with the DTE. So, and this is going to make it, the, the main use for this, as Jeff explained it to us in our hearing, or in our budget conversation, our hearing. They're trying to make me a magistrate yet, but, in our budget talks, was for the banners uptown, I mean, right now, when those guys are up there on Michigan Ave doing banners, they're on ladders, so this is a safer for our employees. It's, like, again, it's used, and then if you look down at the bottom one, there's a rehab to an existing plow truck, and I believe that that utility tractor, I think the tractor that that would be replacing would be a 1964 tractor. I want to tell you how old that is, but, so, I mean, their equipment is in need of replacement.
And to be honest, I'm not really questioning a lot of the DPW, you, you see the age of their equipment.
Right.
I'm just, you know, more concerned with another police vehicle, and 88,000 for dispatch renovations, is that really necessary at this point?
So, again, if, so the quick answer is yes. If, if council wants to continue to have our dispatch center, yes, it is. Majority, as Mickey Joe mentioned earlier, majority of the, the equipment purchases for the upgrades are going to be paid for by the 911 millage, but some of the, this, these other things, for instance, you may, some of you may recall that went on the tours a couple of years ago, and saw, I don't know if all, but I think all, but if not most all, dispatch centers here in the county have the adjustable desks, if you will, or units, so, so they can not only sit down, but they can also stand up, and the whole console goes up. It's, it's good for ergonomics, and it's better for health, and, and the list goes on, but, so those types of things, to make the necessary improvements, so, again, majority of it's being picked up by the, the E911, but if, so, yeah, staff's recommendation is if, if council wants to continue on with the dispatch center here, that, that those things are needed.
Does this include the moderation of construction, glass?
Yes.
Include glass, too?
Costs in the construction.
Yes.
My gosh, as we talked about, since it's a much bigger construction. Do you want to talk a little bit, since Councilwoman Dillon raised the point about what our protocol has been historically for replacing police vehicles, and why we do it a little bit?
Sure, well, so typically, typically, we do it one a year, so we, we keep, we have five cruisers, if you will, and.
You'd be behind.
The year, now, this is a little bit different in that we actually purchased two in '15, because you may recall, we purchased the one early, because otherwise, they were changing the model design, and, and otherwise, we were going to have to wait, basically, another year and get behind, and so, again, that becomes an issue even more so with having older cruisers, vehicles on the road with lots of miles, that become, potentially become unsafe, and, and doing some of the, the driving that police sometimes do in doing their job, you want to have a safe, tight vehicle. So, the, we, the reason we do it every year is we don't want to get behind that eight ball, so maybe we have to buy two in a year, and that's even more expensive. What we've proposed, we're actually propose, we would propose to go away from the Tahos, because GM is essentially pricing, from our estimation, is pricing themselves, they, they went up six or eight grand. So, so now, with the Ford Explorer, and those are through the state bid, you can get a two-wheel drive for a little over $24,000, again, these are pursuit rated, and then for four-wheel drive, you can get it for a little over $25,000, so, I mean, very much as a 35, 35, 38, something.
70 hours.
And again, and we're not flush with cash, as they say, that's the, the reality, that we still need to provide.
All vehicles with.
We can't afford.
And we're recycling, the, you know, that, so the, when one comes out of the fleet, that's going for, I think this year, we're going to use that as a, you know, we've got code enforcement vehicle, we also have a sergeant's car, or a, you know, an invest, if someone's taking stuff over to court, or doing court runs and stuff like that, we provide a car for that. So, when those come out, they go back into the fleet, and they're used in another department, so, and in this case, I think we put, we took out a fleet vehicle, an investigation vehicle, to use one of the other, you know, the other retired patrol car.
Well, or, or a unused cruiser, it'll just depend, I mean, because it depends on what other departments, but, but we, back in about nine or 10, and I think actually, maybe Mayor Morrow kind of led the charge, his first or second year on council, about wanting staff to look at the fleet cars, because the challenge with fleet cars is, you know, some, we had, I think we, I think we eliminated at least two, I think, two, maybe three, but at least two fleet cars for City Hall, and, you know, some days, they might all be sitting here, some days, they might all be out and about, some days, half are sitting here, half are, and so the question is, well, and, you know, why do we need so many, or why don't, or do we need, or do, or don't we need that many? And then, of course, when the very tough times we were on, we're looking for places to reduce, and that's, so that's what we did, and we're not, certainly, we're not looking at expanding currently at all, but, so, you know, just off the top of my head, you know, we have a Taurus that's the staff, that City Hall staff uses, you have.
Wastewater has a whole Crown Vic.
And they also, they also have some pickups as well, but, but, but then, you have code enforcement, they're, he's utilizing a, well, currently, I think it's a pickup, but, but he's going to have a repaired cruiser here in the not, two distant future, I believe, but, I mean, those are just the, the different needs. And then, as well, as Mickey Joe just mentioned, the detective vehicle, so, you know, we have a Taurus, and there was actually, originally, there was one that had been proposed, and in addition to the cruiser, and we said, no, we can't afford that, so we'll, you know, continue to use what we have, whether it's, whether it's the Taurus, and again, this is, you know, having your own city mechanic is a, a good thing, in that, you know, anytime somebody questions the condition of a car, my, typically, my first response is, take it to ART, and have ART determine, if, if ART says it's good, then it's good, if there's a deficiency, he can fix it, or if he can't fix it, he'll say, hey, I can't fix it. So, we do have sound vehicles, and, and so we want to keep all of our employees safe, for that matter, but.
We should ask your question, is ART retiring, how are we replacing?
We're working hard. We're working hard.
So, there's just a piece I wanted to throw in.
Yep, yep, yeah, we're, yeah, we're working hard in recruitment, it's going to be a big shoes to fill.
Do we have any used assets that are going to be sold off? DPW, or is there stuff just not worth the space it takes up at these points?
No.
Yeah, we do, I mean, right, we do, we use eBay, so, when, when those items come up, and, because, because as Mickey Joe mentioned, typically, what happens a lot of times is, so, whatever is the, that's coming off of the, the, out of the police fleet, was getting rotated out, that becomes kind of the, the new fleet car for non-police, and you figure out which, which department needs, kind of in line, or whose turn it is to get the new one, and then you take that one that they currently have, and we sell that, and rotate that out.
You don't get a whole lot for the, the equipment when we get rid of it.
But we have, but we have got a lot, since we've gone to eBay, we do get a better.
Mark it in.
I have one last question, which is, do we have any concerns about the streetscape project going over budget, beyond where we're over budget now?
I have no concerns, Todd probably does.
Yeah, I mean, I, so, I mean, just like any project, especially a project of that, of this magnitude, just like you've seen with the, the Wastewater project, sometimes you get a credit, sometimes something comes in more, and just, you know, at the end of the day, we'll, you know, we, we're going to do our best, certainly, to keep it that way, and if, if there's something certainly significant, then, then we'll be bringing it to council, and so, hopefully, we won't have to, but, again, I won't be surprised, but, but it's hard to, it's hard to determine how much is that going to be, but at the same time, we could get a credit for something, too, that could offset something, so.
There's so often.
Well.
I mean, you see him, you see it go both ways, and it's, it's hard, it's hard to determine.
Okay, I'm good for right now.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dillon, mayor for town office.
My comments run along the lines of the DPW, again, I'm a proponent of a strong, well-equipped DPW, because what those folks either do or are not able to do is probably the most visible thing within our community, to our residents, and so. And, um, so having said that, do we have any more staff coming to DPW?
Not additional, no. We're, we're, we're replacing, you recall, we have, so we've already retired two this year, we're going to retire two more before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, so, we're in the process of, of, um, replacing, so we'd end up having twelve again, is what we, we had. As of last year, we brought in, that we hired a, a new foreman and a new, um, maintenance worker one, so, uh, but no, we have not, um, uh, we've not even, mainly because of the gap, of course, we, we haven't looked at, um, adding more people.
Does this project reflect, uh, moving at a lower cost replacement people?
Yes, I believe it does, right? It does, at maintenance worker one level. Well, and one will, so we'll have we have two, three, right? So, we, so we have, we have, we still have yet to, we're getting close to being able to do some interviews, I believe, for the most recent retiree replacing that position with a, with a maintenance worker one. Um, and then we'll have, again, to Mr. Gearbox's question about, uh, our current, uh, mechanic, Mr. Lau, um, we're, we're working on that already as well, because it's going to be difficult to, to find somebody to fill those shoes, so, um, and then we'll have one more, um, after that to fill, and then, once we get those, uh, either vacancies or soon-to-be vacancies filled, then we'd be at the twelve, so, which is, again, two more than we were a couple of years, two years ago.
Not at any new, but replacing everyone who's leaving.
Do you know if Mr. Lau has any desire to come back with a contract here, would he? Some contract, would you say?
Yeah, um, so, there's a couple of things with, with MERS. So, um, you, it's a IRS rule, they don't, they don't like people getting paid by the same place you're getting your pension from, and so, uh, you're, you're, um, you only get so many hours, you're constricted to so, I think it's like seven hundred and some hours that you can, that you can work before they would freeze your pension. And so, that's my long way of saying, we have not.
Do you see what you're asking, somebody else, that's on the bell's chime?
Well, sure, possibly, but, but, but at the same time, yeah. Well, well, the, right, there's a, there's a, I mean, so you have, you have a, a, a good, solid, very quality mechanic, and, you know, mechanics, I mean, he, he gets paid well, no doubt, but, but, you know, you can, uh, in the private sector, at a dealership, and if you're, you, you can make a, a pretty good living as well. Well, not only that, Art can, Art can, he can operate a plow truck, he can get down in the hole for a water main break, you know, all these things, um, he can run a crew, uh, as a, as a supervisor, um, so, these are things that, uh, the hope is that we can develop someone to, to get all those, but our biggest, um, what we're looking for right now, of course, is a quality mechanic, with, with some of those abilities that we think that we can mold into, into what he, what Art is now.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Since that came up. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, in case anybody had any questions about the environmental commission and the fact that we consistently underspend our budgets, it's because we make a real effort to look for free and low-class things that we can achieve, so we can handle our mission. The whole recycle industry is mainly, you know, right now, and so, that's why we have asked again to keep that to a thousand dollars.
Anything else, Mayor Porten? Mr. Gearbox?
When we were talking about DPW, do you know of this equipment, any of this new, in terms of stuff we've never had before, or is it all replacement?
The small bucket truck is going to be a new piece of equipment that we have. We have the large bucket truck that we use now that is going to be replaced next year, but this is a smaller one that would help, like I said, for the downtown strip, we're adding more lights, we're adding more banner poles and stuff like that. It's new to us, but it would be a used piece of equipment.
And I'm just looking from, we've added a lot of new pieces of equipment to do potentially new types of services.
Right.
We really haven't had a response back of how that's helped us, benefited us, especially from pieces of equipment that we bought to page streets and so forth, and I know we've been doing that, so that may be something in the future we want to have, just have our DPW director.
Absolutely. I was just going to suggest possibly, if, if council wants to at the next, uh, work session, depending where we go, but you may recall, we, um, bring in, as, as the mayor just said, the big three, being DPW being one, and that, we could certainly have him report out on that at that, at that time, if that would be, uh, beneficial.
Mr. Gearbox, just to be clear, so you, you'd be referring to, uh, a piece of equipment like that patch machine?
Yeah, we've invested some, uh, some funds into those type of things, hoping that that would be a payoff for us in terms of, of, you know, instead of having to do roads and so forth, and I know part of the problem was having the staff to do it, and now that we've added two new positions, and unfortunately we're losing all the expertise because of other retirees, but just kind of having an overview of what that is.
Sure, and certainly we can have him give the detail, but I can, I can tell you, uh, we spent significant, an increased amount of, of time and resources this last year on what I call the, the quilting of the streets, right, where you have significant-sized patches, um, that we did ourselves, again, utilizing that equipment, but, but certainly he can give you the, the more specifics, but absolutely. Um, I, I believe, just to answer real quick, uh, the, where it says utility tractor and large brush hog, I believe we're increasing, getting a lot, the, the brush hog is larger to help, um, be more effective on some of those lots, um, that, that we mow a couple of times a year, for instance, uh, to help us get it done, as opposed to taking a couple of days to, to do that.
Oh, so some of those could partially be paid for out of our LDFA? Because I'm thinking a lot of those is the bone that we're going to do out of industrial parks.
Sure, and, and, yeah, yes, yes.
Um, oh, the other question I had about, we were talking about retirements as well. Do we know how much of a payout, one-time payouts are going to be, are built into this budget for this year as a result of retirement? Whether you're the sick time and so forth?
So, again, you need to knock on wood, but we don't, the FY seventeen budget, we don't have any projected retirees, because they're going to be gone in FY six, two, and it's in this fiscal years. I mean, any, we have people who are eligible, but there's no indication that they would be leaving us.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things that we, to whatever level possible, say, hey, to the department, say, hey, do you know of anybody in your department that's going to be retiring this coming year, so we can do just that, so we can budget for those, but as Mickey Joe said, we don't, we're not aware that anybody's, nobody has said, yes, I'm thinking about retiring.
And we have kind of talked to the individuals who are eligible, and they're like, you know, for whatever reasons, most of it's because their spouses are in the, you know, their incomes on the stock market, and they're like, oh, no, we're still here.
So, the amount built into this year for finishing out FY sixteen is around, do you have any figure, a hundred thousand dollars?
Do you remember what we put in there? They're laying on my desk. It was a couple hundred thousand for the payouts.
So, then that'll free up for next year.
Yeah.
Um, just one question, now, the transfer of component units, um, this may be part of, I'm not sure what it is, the six-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, we're here at one-hundred-and-fifty, what's the five-hundred-thousand-dollar difference?
TFO, the contribution to Streetscape.
I don't know, five-hundred-two dollars.
TFO, not TFO.
I'm looking at the other, we'll talk about the ninety-eight percent, it's fine. Um, at this point, that's about it for me right now.
That's good, you're good, okay. Well, as Mr. Campbell indicated, um, at our next work meeting, which will be in two weeks, also beginning at six P.M., in addition to having our city manager, of course, city clerk, and, um, our finance team, we will have Director Scruggs, Police Chief Renickam, DPW Director Fortes.
Absolutely, that's, we've kind of told them to put them in the bullpen, or to wait and see if that's what council wanted to do.
I would assume there's no objection, I think it would be helpful to have each one of them go over their, um, particular budgets, um, in a little bit more depth, so I, I acknowledge that one. If there are scenarios or specific detailed questions that you have for any of those three, feel free to forward those to City Manager Campbell, but at a minimum, certainly be, um, prepared to, to discuss with them their portions of, of the general operating budget for fiscal year seventeen. Ladies, do you have anything else you want to go over this evening?
No, I understand it's a lot of information, so if you think of questions throughout, don't hesitate to, you know, email us all, and we'll, we'll try to get you the best answer. I will definitely be working on the personal property for what the future holds, so that we can kind of have that, that's a great, wish I kind of would have thought of that.
Are there any other questions? Well, let me, I don't necessarily want to get into it tonight, Mickey Joe, you and I talked about it, um, at some length, and I talked to, to the city manager about it briefly, but as we look five, ten years out, and we, we seek ways to manage and control our costs, while also deliberating for our, our citizens and for our retirees, we need to talk a little bit about, um, retiree healthcare. Will you be prepared to discuss potential changes at an upcoming meeting and how that might impact our?
I believe we have reached out to CapNIC and to C, um, and so, as you may recall, back when we had our healthcare open enrollment back in the winter, November, um, we have not made any changes to our retirees as far as their healthcare, and reasons in the past have always been that you didn't want to, you know, upset the apple cart. Well, everyone is upsetting the apple cart, but what they found is that it's legal to do as long as there's a parallel move, is that how I want to say that?
Lateral.
Lateral move. Um, and so, Dave Field from CapNIC does feel that we could move them into a different program that would offer them the same benefits and save us some money, but it would be a huge thing that we would need to communicate, and he's going to pull those numbers together for us. That would only have an impact on half of this budget, since that wouldn't take effect until two thousand seventeen, when we have open enrollment. But that is something we've contacted CapNIC to prepare, and we hope to have numbers for you.
Well, and, and the only thing I want to add to that is, um, again, I, I preface by saying, as we look five, ten years out, uh, I think that's something that we owe, um, the community, we owe the residents to, to look at that. I'm not necessarily an advocate for change at this point, not being able to review and digest the data, um, but I think that's something that needs to be thoughtfully considered by, by this group, so I'm glad that you're on that, and I'm glad that our, our friends at, at CapNIC will be providing us some data that are in your future. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to add, because, so, it's probably been about, I'm going to guess here, about two thousand and ten-ish, maybe, we had, staff had brought that to, to then council and, and was directed to, well, the council wasn't interested in, in looking at that any further. Um, it's, but in preparation for that, we had our former city attorney look into it and, and to Mickey Joe's point about, um, typically what you saw at that time was, if it were lateral move, meaning that the, the retirees didn't get a, a lesser, uh, benefit, that typically speaking, if, if it did go to court, for instance, that the judges would rule in favor of the employer, or the former employer, I should say. Um, however, since, since then, I, I know talking with Steve Girard, our city attorney, there are a, a number of items there that, that were, um, the benefit has been reduced. Um, so, and I'm not suggesting, I'm not, as Mayor said, I'm not advocating one way or the other, uh, but we're providing you some information to, to discuss and think about and, and look at, so.
Mayor Porten?
I had one item that I wanted to bring up, which is, uh, stands out past this year, but that is, uh, the current need for a parking structure of some type in our downtown area. Um, there's two, two areas that strike me as being suitable for a structure, part of the other side and their location. One is parking lot number two, which is for those of us who have a couple of different numbers, one behind max, larger space, it's large enough that, that one could put in a structure with perhaps one below grade level, um, and then three above, and without causing any, too much consternation by the neighbors, because it's already surrounded on three sides, much structures that would be about the same height. Um, so that's one possibility. The other is the eventual development by somebody of one forty-seven, who's in that environment. Whoever does that is going to have to create some parking, and so perhaps there's not going to be there for a public-private partnership, um, to create, again, some structure, parking lot. And one of the reasons why I said one, one level below grade is because they're digging on that, or any, we're putting sports, so we'll excavate the rest of the car structure in there. So, anyway, I think, we, I think we need to give some serious consideration to that. We're going to get our downtown, um, developed more, to have more people who are living downtown and coming downtown to shop. And, um, you want, or both of those structures could happen, and I believe we could take some of the existing service lot and convert it over into revenue generating commercial structure, and that would give us more activity, more variety downtown, could tend to bring more people to us.
I would. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, and of course, it's an issue that you and I have discussed in the past, and, of course, you were right to, to preface by saying, as we look five, ten, maybe fifteen years out.
I did hear that.
This should be a goal of the community, but I absolutely agree with you, and I, I would encourage my colleagues to, to think about that, and we can, of course, have, have future conversations on, on this topic, but again, like Mayor Porten Road said, he was quite elegant, elegant. If, if the goal is for our downtown to continue to grow and thrive and be an attractive place for people to do business, but also to live, um, there's going to need to be more parking options, and it seems, uh, pretty clear to me that surface parking lots oftentimes are a, are a waste of prime real estate. Um, and so, um, if there's a way to, to encourage growth and, and potentially even get some of the, the, the parcels that are currently used for, for parking lots back on the tax rolls, um, I think that would be a good thing. So, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, and again, would encourage my colleagues to, to think more about that, uh, for the future. Anything else this evening? No, then we're going to get out of here a little bit early. Um, just again, noting in two weeks, we'll have an additional budget meeting beginning, um, again, at six P.M. here in council chambers. Um, at this time, we come to public comments under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make common or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person, anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, then I'll seek a motion to adjourn at, let's make it seven, ten P.M. Moved by Councilmember Gearbox, seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, say nay. I say have it, but I should caution you, I'm just like, this meeting is adjourned.